We are calling the May eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen Regular Board Meeting for Community High School District one twenty-eight. First thing is the roll call. Oh, the pledge, I'm sorry. I have it right in front of me. Okay. We have a roll call, please.
Here.
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 You'll note, for the record, Pat is away along with Dr. Lee. Dr. Grudy and Dr. Lee are representing the high school district in another meeting with the Village of Libertyville, so they won't be with us this evening. It's a little unusual. Each time this year, we have so many students to be recognized, we move this portion of the meeting to our auditorium, so we'll take this opportunity for us all to get up and reconvene down in the auditorium, so.
And we go down, you can go down the stairs here at the auditorium at the upper level, walk down the stairs and there's some chairs set up along the left-hand side of the stage if you would like.
Good evening, I'm Al Fleming, I'm the Associate Superintendent in Community High School District one twenty-eight, and welcome to our May eighteenth Regular Board Meeting. A little bit unusual. Every year during the year, at various months, we have student recognition where we honor the achievements of our students. In May, because of the culminating activities at the end of the year with competitions and some of the activities that students have been involved in, we receive many awards at the end of the school year, and so we take part in the board meeting and hold it down here in the auditorium to, because we just couldn't hold all of you in the library or the board meeting itself, you're welcome to join us after this portion of the board meeting if you would like. So, without much more fanfare, we're going to start and recognize our students and the achievements that they've accomplished this year. We're gonna start with Dr. Scott and Libertyville High School.
Thank you, everyone. It's great to see such a large crowd. I'd like to start off with the twentieth annual Prudential Spirit of the Community National Honor for Outstanding Volunteerism. That's the mouthful, and so is his name, Nicholas Tasiopoulos, come on down. For Nick, the death of a family member altered the course of his history. Rather than wallow in grief, he and his sisters found a purpose for the unfortunate event and turned tragedy into meaning. They started the I Want to Be a Lifesaver Foundation and have raised eighty thousand dollars to date for a campaign. What started out as selling small items morphed into ice shows and silent auctions with over two hundred attendees, and then the famous, I was just talking to Nick about this, the chuckle puck, where participants at the ice hockey hurl the puck, hoping it will land in the center of the arena. Way more difficult than it sounds. Nick has also involved in organizations at LHS including Best Buddies, Boys Tennis, and more, where he's always quick to volunteer help to raise money for any organization. It's safe to say that Nick has a heart for others, and that's why we're honoring him tonight. And now I'd like to introduce three very special coaches, Monica Patterson, Katie Hylla, and Kristen Tarrant, and they're here to introduce our FCCLA organization. They're gonna tell you a little bit about it and introduce students from both schools, I believe.
Good evening. My name's Katie Hylla, and I'm one of the advisors for FCCLA, which stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. It's the Family Consumer Sciences Professional Organization, and we host competitions in child development, clothing construction, and culinary events. There are many more, but those are the ones that we competed in this year. My students competed mostly in cookie decorating and cake decorating, both for fondant and conventional frosting. So I'd like to take a moment to recognize these lovely ladies right now. Please step forward. Mia Clark. Jane and Robert Dennis. Diana Lisa McHale. Izzy Mason. Lupe Montoya. Madeline Huler, who achieved most outstanding in State of Illinois. Kylie Rodriguez. And that's all.
I'm Kristen Tarrant, and all of my students participated in child development, either literature or Latin category, and they all were awarded gold medals. Nicole Axe. Jennifer Headwood. Michelle Lee. Mallory Kaplan. And Julia Crowe.
Okay, I didn't even bring this in on glasses, so step forward. These were the girls that competed in clothing construction, creating garments, and having a judge, and of the eight girls that went, six of them received gold medals. So, we have Morgan, Amy, Karika, Mia, Mary, Sammy, Anna, and also I'd like to award them also, three of the girls received the most outstanding, similar to what Mary did, and one of the girls received the most outstanding in the whole competition, every category.
Unfortunately, none of the Vernon Hills advisors could be here tonight, so we just wanted to take a moment to recognize those students. And Alondra Agular won a gold medal for a former. Thank you.
Well done, ladies. I don't think that's a club open only to females, guys, just so you know. All right, at this point, we're gonna celebrate some of Vernon Hills' success. Our Junior State of America has some success this year. They are coached by Alien Orzoff, Beranek, and Matthew Clifford. So when they introduce those two, as soon as we get this exchange, then we're here. Come on up, J S A.
Hi, I'm Alien Orzoff-Beranek, and this is my co-sponsor, Anthony Clifford, and Junior State of America is a nonpartisan political debate club, and we were very, very honored this year to receive a Chapter of the Year Award, which we had never received before. So for the entire Midwest, and that includes lots of different states, our chapter was named as the number one chapter because of everything that they set forth, put together this year. So, thank you. So I'd like to individually recognize, and Raina Karati, who also received Statesman of the Year. Misha Badna, our club president. Isabel Casvas. Krishanjia, who will be President of the Club next year. Abai Ram. Viva Chastri. And Sanha Skiran, who won one of our best speaker awards this year. Thank you.
All right, next up, we'd like to celebrate the Vernon Hills High School Jazz Band. Come on up. I'm gonna introduce Drew Russell and Randy Saldanell, who are the directors of the Jazz Band. Come on up, Jazz Band.
While we're getting set up, we'll tell you a little bit about the Jazz Band's accomplishment from this semester. In February, we went all the way down to the Rolling Meadows Jazz Festival, where they host the largest jazz festival really in the Midwest. The festival hosts about two hundred and fifty student groups from five different states. Occasionally, there's six or seven states, but this year there were five. This is actually only the second time that this group that you're seeing here has participated in a competition of any kind, and they were selected as the Class Two-A Champions. They were selected as first place in that competition, and that is really just a remarkable accomplishment for them, and I think Mr. Saldanell couldn't be more proud of them. So, Mr. Saldanell. So Mr. Saldanell will go ahead and read off their names, and they'll stand forward and then go back. Please hold your applause until we get through to the end of the line. We have Mason Goldberg, Spencer Moffett, Ethan Seaw, Dylan Barnett, Peter Merrick, Michael Walsh, Adam Weinberg, Tyler Walls, Carlos Rosales, Matthew Kim, Siri Lee, Stephen Zane, Mark Edler, Dilla Had, sorry, Hed Ollwick, Ha Su Lee, Michael Ricky, Finn Leal, Anthony Sandry, Elmer Mollcheck, and I'm going to let him.
All right, Vernon Hills Wise Team. Vernon Hills Wise Team, come on up. Vernon Hills Wise, coached by Josh Ravenscraft.
Well, they're getting ready. Most people don't know what WISE stands for. It stands for Worldwide Youth in Science and Education. It's an academic competition in which fourteen individuals compete in seven different academic areas. We competed at state against about twenty full teams, and more importantly, there was about three hundred or more individual students competing in these seven academic areas. We had a great turnout in which we took first place this year as a team, which is the second year we've done this in a row, so congratulations. And individually, I'm gonna read our accomplishments to individuals when I read their names. Ari Mahart. Nikki Shaker-Maharty. Ryan Curtis. Ryan took first in computer science and then fourth in chemistry. Aiden King. Isam Kair. Siri Lee. Karen Lu. Thomas Mollcheck. Harid Asmanga. Lucy Wu. Lucy took third in biology. And Justin Ian. Justin took first in math and first in physics, and this was his seventh first-place title in state.
Before I introduce the Libertyville math team, let me just say that it's pretty amazing that in the last three years, District one twenty-eight has toppled the first-place championship trophy in math between first and second. That's a pretty amazing feat, I think, if you think of the whole state of Illinois. This year, Libertyville came in on top, and I'd like to introduce head coach Rick Brenner and his assistants, Tammy Rendy and Lisa Lemanowski. I know you guys didn't look like you were gonna come up here, but if I don't send you up, they'll think you're part of the math team, so come on up. And the whole math team can come as well, once you guys join up. When a state bound team is ready to set off for their competition, they come to my office and they receive a goodie bag, and we take their picture for the state street wall. Well, on the day that we were to send the math team off, my food service manager was out of the building sick, and I looked at the activity director and she said, "No goodie bags." I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, what are we gonna do?" So at the last minute, she pulled these foam pencils out of her stash, and they became, I think, the good luck charm for the Libertyville High School math teams, and the coaches told me they could see the little orange foam writing, writing, writing through the competition. So I'll let you talk about the rest of it.
Yes, indeed, we had practiced the night before at the hotel, and again the next morning at the UMI, and the kids had their number-one finger pencils out practicing. What other group would use a pencil as a gift? How appropriate was that?
Yes, Dr. Scott, I was going to say exactly what she said. Think about the entire state of Illinois, and our district has brought home one and two for the past three years in a row. How outstanding is that? I would like to read the names of our state qualifying team members, and please step forward when your name is read. I'll read the names that are not here also. Ryan Logan, Micah Bream, Brent Chow, David Chow, Aaron Chen, Louis Cherry, Tara De Souza, Maya De Souza, Sean Deppy, Maxwell Flandigan, Carl Gardner, Hannah Gardner, Annie Hung, Michelle G., Jason G., Hannah Loizzo, Katie Wong, Hannah Manich, Travis King, Sir Raj Rajendran, Hunter Rostoki, Tony Salazar, Elliot Standey, Ryan Tang, Louis Wang, Hannah Lu, Jesse An, Andy Zane, Alex Zane, and Daniel Zohar. Thank you.
And now I'd like to bring up the Vernon Hills High School math team. Second thing, I just want to say that I don't know if that is easy, I would have to use blue foam fingers next year. Coach Cheryl Ballinger was with us tonight. Welcome, Cheryl.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Ballinger, and I just want to say, me helping myself and the other coaches of the team, we're so very proud of our team, the students worked so hard, and just we had great results. And I want to echo what we've said and what Dr. Scott said. In our division in the state of Illinois, there are sixty-one other teams, there are sixty-one teams in total, so to take first and second place three years ago is really amazing, so it's just awesome. So I'd like to introduce the students that are here tonight, so if you could just step forward when I say your names. So Lucy Wu. Keishore Iyer. Justin, I'm gonna have to ask you last for a second. Ari Mahart. Ryan Curtis. Aiden King. Zach Kristberger. Abirajah Barajou. Abirajou. Alun. Zach Chen. Stephen Zane. And Justin Ian, and I just want to say a few words about Justin. So Justin is the President of our math team this year. He's been on our math team for four years and has just done amazing performances in interstate competition. So this was the first year that Justin was our oralist, he was the state champion oralist, he was first in state in the pre-calculus event, and he and Aiden were first in state in the junior senior two-verse team. So the other coaches and I are gonna need a full big carton of tissues, we're gonna be crying so hard when Justin leaves because we are truly gonna miss him in the future, so I just want to say congratulations to Justin Ian.
We have one additional award tonight that we want to hand out. This young man is standing next to me, named Robbie Nardino, Robbie's Senior of Art at Vernon Hills, and tonight, the one athletic athlete that we are honoring. If you have seen any Vernon Hills sports, a good chance you've seen Robbie participate, who's a standout receiver for the football team. He's tearing it up in baseball right now. By the time we honor him for his efforts in basketball, as a four-year player with Coach Matt McCarthy, who cannot be here tonight. Just a couple things, first of all, I've seen Robbie play for four years, and he's the kind of kid who you hate when he's on the other team, but you love him on your team. Because he's gritty, he can get after it. He has, he's an all-conference basketball player, an all-area basketball player. He has the most three-pointers in a game, in a season, and a career. He's the second-leading scorer in Vernon Hills High School history, but tonight we honor him as a special mention in Class Three-A, Four-A, All-Stater. Congratulations to Robbie Nardino.
And before we conclude this portion of the agenda to the board meeting, I just want to say that in a district that is successful as District one twenty-eight, the basis for that success is our parents, and whether that's athletic, academic, or social success that our students attain, has to start at moments, start with you, and we don't take that for granted. And we know that when students come to us, we take them from here and move them to here rather than from down here, and that's to your credit. So we'd like to thank you for the participation and the hard work you play in the success of Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School. So thank you. Dr. Lee, I mentioned that we had one athletic recognition tonight. That's because our state competitions haven't concluded, but before the end of the school year, actually, maybe a little bit after the school year, we will have a number of other accomplishments that we hope to recognize our students. So thank you for coming tonight, and have a good evening.
Okay, well, reconvene up here, that's always one of the more enjoyable portions of any board meeting for the year. It's always great when we can recognize our students, so we'll continue on with the agenda here. I'll actually review the agenda briefly. We have a, we'll have a President's Report, or in this case, a Vice President's Report, a Superintendent's Report, an invitation for public comment, we'll have a consent vote, vote agenda for a consent vote, we'll have reports from the Program and Personnel Committee, from the Facilities and Finance Committee. Would it be anything from the Property Committee?
Nothing this evening.
Anything from the seat hall?
No, I extracted.
Okay. We'll get that next time. There's nothing at this point from the Illinois Association of School Awards, and then we don't have an adjournment, so, that being said... Maya D'Souza, Sean Levy, Maxwell Flandigan, Carl Gardner, Hannah Gardner, Annie Hohn, Michelle G., Jason G., Hannah Wizzo, Katie Huang, Hannah Manich, Travis King, Sir Raj Rajendran, Andrew Rostoki, Tony Salazar, Elliot Sandy, Ryan Tang, Louis Wang, Andrew, Jesse Ann, Andy Zhang, Alex Zhang, and Daniel Zohar.
And now we'd like to bring up the Vernon Hills High School math team. Second place, if you can say that, I don't know if that is easy, I would have to use blue foam fingers. Next year. Coach Cheryl Ballinger was with us tonight. Welcome Cheryl.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Ballinger. And I just want to say on behalf of myself and the other coaches of the team, we're so very proud of our team. The students worked so hard and just we had great results. And I want to echo what we've said and what Dr. Scott said. In our division in the state of Illinois, there are 61 other teams, there's 61 teams in total. So to take first and second place three years ago is really amazing. So it's just awesome. So I'd like to introduce the students that are here tonight. So if you could just step forward when I say your names. So Lucy Wu, Keisha O'Yar, Justin, I have two last for a second. Ari Bard, Ryan Purvis, Amy Ng, Zach Kristenberger, Abirajah Barajew, Akash Sadi, Alun, Zach Chen, Stephen Zhang, and Justin M. And I just want to say a few words about Justin. So Justin is the president of our math team this year. He's been on our math team for four years and has just done amazing performances in interstate competition. So this was the first year that Justin was our oralist. He was the state champion oralist. He was first in state in the pre-calculus event. And he and Aiden were first in state in the junior senior twos in the team. So the other coaches and I are going to need a full big heart of tissues. We're going to be crying so hard when Justin leaves because we are truly going to miss him in the future. So I just want to say congratulations to Justin.
We have one additional award tonight that we want to hand out. This young man is standing next to me named Robbie Nardino. Robbie's a senior of our Vernon Hills. And tonight, the one athletic athlete that we are honoring. If you have seen any Vernon Hills sports, a good chance you've seen Robbie participate. He was a standout receiver for the football team. He's tearing it up in baseball right now. By the time we honor him for his efforts in basketball as a four-year player with Coach Matt McCarty who cannot be here tonight. Just a couple things. First of all, I've seen Robbie play for four years. And he's the kind of kid who you hate when he's on the other team, but you love him on your team. Because he's gritty, he can get after it. He has, he's an all-conference basketball player, an all-area basketball player. He has the most three-pointers in a game in a season and a career. He's the second-leading scorer in Vernon Hills High School history. But tonight we honor him as a special mention in class 3A, 4A, All-Stater. Congratulations to Robbie Nardino.
And before we conclude this portion of the agenda to the board meeting, I just want to say that in a district that is as successful as District 128, the basis for that success is our parents. And whether that's athletic, academic, or social success that our students attain has to start at, well, it starts with you. We don't take that for granted. And we know that when students come to us, we take them from here and move them to here rather than from down here. And that's to your credit. So we'd like to thank you for the participation and the hard work you play in the success of Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School. So thank you. Dr. Elliott mentioned that we have one athletic recognition tonight. That's because our state competitions haven't concluded. But before the end of the school year, actually maybe a little bit after the school year, we will have a number of other accomplishments that we hope to recognize our students. So thank you for coming tonight and have a good evening.
Okay, well, we convene up here. That's always one of the more enjoyable portions of any board meeting for the year. It's the always great when we can recognize our students. So we'll continue on with the agenda here. I'll actually review the agenda briefly. We have a, we'll have a president's report, or in this case, a vice president's report. A superintendent's report, an invitation for public comment. We'll have a consent vote, vote agenda for a consent vote. We'll have reports from the program and personnel committee, from the facilities and finance committee. Would it be anything from the property committee?
Nothing this evening.
Anything from the CEDOL?
No, I was distracted.
Okay. We'll get that next time. There's nothing at this point from the Illinois Association of School Boards, and then we don't have an adjournment. So that being said, we'll go back to the top of the list here. I have, for the president's report, I have a couple items. One is the appointment of school board committees. And this is, the committees, we have two primary committees, the program personnel and the facilities and finance committee. They meet the second Monday of each month, and that's where quite a bit of the hard work of the board occurs. We get into deep discussion on details of topics so that when we come back to this meeting on the fourth Monday of the month, we can spend more time with things like student recognition. So just to come down the list, first of all, the officers, I'll mention those as well. President Pat Grudy, who is not here this evening. My name's Jim Batson. I will serve as the vice president for the upcoming period here. Ellen Maurer continues as our secretary. The program and personnel committee will be chaired by Ellen Maurer and will also include Karen Lundstedt and Pat Grudy. The facilities and finance committee, I will be chairing, and will be Stephen Arthur and Scott Booth will be joining me on that committee. Just as a point of reference, everybody's invited. Those are open meetings. Everybody's invited to attend those. And quite often, the other board members will wind up attending each other's committee meetings, if you will. So we're all informed as to, on those topics. Property committee will continue to be chaired by Stephen Arthur. And fortunately, there's no negotiations committee right now needed. So we have two other positions. The representative to the Illinois Association of School Boards, which I do, which typically involves some communication and a meeting or two every year. And then our board offers a delegate to the governing board of the Special Education District of Lake County, CEDOL. And Karen Lundstedt will be reporting or serving on our behalf on that governing board. So that is the committee appointments. Any questions or comments from any of the board members? Okay. We have, this is another, one of those sort of bittersweet times. We have students who are seniors who are moving on. We have the same thing here. We have some students that have been serving as student school board representatives who are moving on, and we have some new ones. So it's a lot worse sad to see you go. We're happy to see you move on to other things in your life and happy to see the new representatives come join us tonight and then especially next year throughout the year. So to recognize the current school board representatives, we have some plaques here that we'd like to present. Okay, we have, just to read what's on here, I hope you can pick me up and up. The community high school District 128 Board of Education extends a special thank you to each of you for his or her service as the 2014-2015 Vernon Hills High School Student Representative, or Libertyville High School Student Representative, as the case may be. His or her dedication on behalf of her fellow students has enhanced the communication and understanding of issues between the students and the board members in May 2015. So this is led at. From Libertyville, Gina. From Libertyville High School also, Anchor. And also from Libertyville, Samuel. Two others that were not able to be here tonight. So we want to thank you so much for all your contributions. It's really interesting to hear the student perspective and have your participation. And I know the monthly gatherings with Pat, I know he looks forward to that every month. We're going to miss you, but you know, good luck in your, in your future activities. I know it'll be great.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we want to welcome our 2015-2016 student school board representatives. And if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Libertyville High School, Nihar Padi.
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 Bad Ki.
How do you say it?
Bad Ki.
Bad Ki. I'm sorry. I shouldn't be able to read that. Say, yeah, go ahead and stand up for these things. Smith. Luke Wartnabi. Please correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong. Joey Bullos. And also from Vernon Hills, Emily Fayel. And from Vernon Hills, Zachary Kirstenberger. We look forward to working with you folks over the next year. You can probably get some information from these young folks that it really does help us put perspective on what we do and how we do it. So I, we appreciate your stepping up to do this. I know if Pat were here, Dr. Grudy always says this is one of the hardest decisions he has to make, is to choose amongst all the incredible candidates for the school board representative. And I think he's made it maybe a little easier. I think when I started here, we maybe had one or two from each school, and now we're up to like three, and who knows, maybe next year it will be four or five. So welcome, and we look forward to working with you. Okay, speaking of school board, student reps, we'll have a final report from each of the school, student reps here.
So for LHS, so AP exams are finally done. It's kind of a sigh of relief for all of us seniors as a lot of our classes were APs. So now we're kind of just relaxing a little bit and just waiting for finals for those last few that we have to wrap up. So those are coming in about two weeks, and graduation is on the fifth. So it's all coming very quickly. The CRC will also host MR tonight, this week, on Wednesday. And so basically, it recognizes students with scholarships from outside organizations and their schools over late in the year and for all of our seniors. Also, we'd like to say congratulations to the LHS math team for receiving first place in state. The team returned after a second place finish to reclaim their state title previously won in 2013. And then also congratulations to the Vernon Hills math team for getting second place. I think that says a lot about our district. So I would also like to thank the board just for this great opportunity as a student board representative. I've learned so much about myself throughout this entire process and so much about my fellow representatives, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity. So thank you.
Yeah, so the Vernon Hills math team got second in state, and we got first in state. Just to clarify. The annual student art show is coming up this Thursday and is going to take place for students Friday morning in the main gym. I went to that last year and it was pretty incredible to see what kids come up with photographs and the art, everything that they do. Several students received first, second, and third place awards at the Skills USA Competition, Appeal to Graphic Communications, Green Printing, and Job Skill Demonstration. And I know they were pretty excited about that. In terms of sports, all of spring sports are pretty much wrapping up and winding down, including lacrosse and water polo. They have big games coming up soon. So miscellaneous news, the inaugural LHS color run was a huge success. Student Council, I think, was aiming to purchase 10 high-grade water filters for communities in Africa, and they ended up purchasing 35. So that was a big deal, helped a lot of people. And finally, for me, there was some sort of weird virus that came up this morning. Some of us in your class was not able to come to school. I also had that virus.
Yeah, quick recovery.
Yeah, it's a strange paralytic disease, but we all suffered from it at one point or another. So just kind of to wrap up the miscellaneous news. So first things first, LHS will be hosting their first-ever LIPDO and talent showcase tomorrow. It's going to happen after, at the beginning of third period. And it'll be a good way for us to showcase kind of all of LHS's sports and athletics and activities, and maybe attract attention to some of the things that people don't know too much about. And just as the name implies, a good way to showcase what LHS has to offer. Hopefully it'll be the first of many. There'll be two cameras running, we'll probably get some good shots out of it, and we'll see how it goes. In terms of other miscellaneous and social news, Prom is a resounding success this year. For those of you who doesn't know, Prom was held on the Spirit of Chicago, which is a small yacht. And we enjoyed a three-hour cruise on Lake Michigan this year. So, you know, we had our concerns going into it, would it rain, would it not rain, you know, would we actually leave it dock, would it be too windy? Everything ended up working out very well. It was a great time. And I just want to say thank you to the student council and to the administration for making it happen and letting it happen. So in other news, the prom assembly on the same note was especially impactful this year. You know, usually there is a presentation given the Friday before prom weekend, and the message is usually the same, you know, make good choices, be safe, be smart, be responsible. But this year, we had a speaker come in, I believe his name's Mike Donahue. And he carried a message that was unusual in that he didn't just talk to us in an attempt to scare us or kind of intimidate us about what might happen over the weekend, but he shared some of his own experiences and told us to be responsible and value ourselves in terms of what we do over the weekend. And whatever choices we make, make sure we understand, not only the impacts, but the responsibilities that come with making those choices. So at least personally, I will say thank you for the administration. It was a different message this year. I think it was one that was more impactful, and I think it led to some good impacts over the weekend. As far as I know, we made relatively safe decisions this weekend. As was mentioned earlier, a big welcome to our new student board representatives. The decision process was long and arduous. We spent a long time discussing our potential candidates and all of their interests and opinions and goals for this year and next year. So obviously, we have Nihar Fadki, we have Luke Hornaby and Amelia Schmidt. They'll do a great job. They have a diverse set of interests and a diverse set of goals. So a big welcome to them. And at least from my side, I want to say again, thank you to the board, as my fellow representatives have mentioned. It was a crazy experience from the beginning to kind of get an inside view into what really happens at board meetings and kind of what's the thought process behind some of the really big decisions that happen at our school. And yes, these meetings are available to watch online and, you know, via High School Keep or other media. But actually, being here was different because it was more impactful and the fact that we got the opportunity to kind of discuss some of our own opinions, I just want to say thank you. So, thank you.
And I also wanted to thank the board.
Too late.
If it's not too late, it must be a fever. No, I mean, it's, it's really inspiring to see the amount of work that gets done on a volunteer basis and with the administration. And it's been a great opportunity. So thank you.
Right now, I'm really regretting my decision to let Libertyville go first. So I'm going to start with a nice thank you as well. It was so great being able to get close and up close and personal with all of the background decisions and you all as individuals. And can I come back next year, like when I'm home from weekend breaks? Yeah? Cool. I'll be with it. So my friends Stanley and Tori, I'm pretty sure maybe have this virus. So I'm going to be by myself. And I'm going to go and start with what I know best, sports. Sectionals this weekend, boys track, with a promising group likely heading to state. Girls track had sectionals this past week with a group of qualifiers that will compete starting this Thursday through the weekend. Boys volleyball had a successful season, has been having a successful season so far. And regionals start next week. Girls soccer has regionals starting tomorrow. We had prom this Saturday, which was awesome, it was a fun time. We got really nicely dressed up. The Sugarman Awards are this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. Congratulations, June 4th. And we have an art show, okay, I'm going to plug something here. So this Tuesday, starting at 6:00 PM, we have the student art show in the foyer. Everyone should go there. And then, I think, is it 8:00 PM, we have the acapella concert. I will be performing, and it's going to be awesome. So everyone come. Also, this Thursday, we have our final band concert, in which we will be showcasing Christian Hughes as a senior soloist on percussion. And our final orchestra concert with a combined choir performance will be May 27th, which is on Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have superintendent's report.
Just want to add my appreciation and congratulations to you as a group. I think for the adults around the table who are not in the building every day, your perspective is very, very important to us and the contributions you make. For example, the most recent illustration of that is your input and discussion of our digital learning strategy. And that really helped us to see a student perspective to all of us. And we don't, we don't take that for granted, so appreciate your impact, your impacting your input on that. In addition to over 130 students that we recognized just a few minutes ago, we have more good news. Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School ranked 13th and 19th respectively among Illinois high schools in the U.S. News and World Report 2015 Best High School Rankings released on May 12th. Quite an amazing accomplishment. LHS senior anchor Rostaji was named the 2015 recipient of the National Mayor $2,500 Scholarship Award. Congratulations, Anchor. D-128 staff members and the D-128 Foundation for Learning were recipients of honors at the May 8th Distinguished Service Awards Luncheon sponsored by the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association. The annual program recognizes public education stakeholders for their support of education. D-128 Associate Superintendent Secretary Fran Walrath received an award of excellence in the support staff category. D-128 recipients of award of Merit Warrior Vernon Hills High School Assistant Principal Jean Ockett in the administrator category. LHS Assistant Athletic Director, Physical Education Teacher, and Rental Coordinator John Fishel in the teacher category. And District 128 Foundation for Learning in the team category. So quite an accomplishment from our district. The following students were named LHS May Students of the Month. Sean Ferraro, Ramon Cervantes, Mary Wilterink, Amber Hedgewood, Emily Berger, Ben Montgomery, Brian Weiss, Austin Matier, Travis Trigaz, David Cow, Alex Zhang, and Danny Vega. VHS head girls basketball coach, Paul Bretner, and VHS head boys basketball coach, Matt McCarty, were recently honored as Illinois Basketball Coaches Association Coach of the Year recipients. Vernon Hills High School juniors Stephanie Venito and Yara Shin, and LHS juniors Sarah Broughton, Madeline Guillard, and Gabriela Haas have been selected as delegates to attend the 75th Session of the American Legion Auxiliary Illini Girls State, June 21 to 27, on the campus of Eastern Illinois University. Girls State is a week-long program dedicated to providing training for young women in city, county, and state government. In February 2015, Vernon Hills High School junior Finley Lau participated in the Midwest Young Artists 8th Annual Discover National Chamber of Music Competition with two Young Artists Eighth Annual Discover National Chamber of Music Competition with two seniors from local Chicago high schools. Their percussion chamber group was selected as the overall division winner and other instruments category winner. As a result, they were featured on NPR's From the Top with host Christopher O'Reilly. They participated in the National Arts Leadership Program from April 1st, April 28th to May 1st at the Frost School of Music at the University of Miami. This is a recorded session, you can hear on 98.7 W F M T, Sunday, June 7th at 7:00 PM. LHS students will receive the following awards, honors at the upcoming Technology Campus Awards and Honors Night. Preferred Graduate Status, Dylan Rooney Automotive Service. National Technical Honor Society, Dylan Rooney Automotive Service. And Daisy Garcia in Cosmetology. Skills USA State Conference, Zachary Jenkins in Technical Computer Applications, Matthew Norton in Information Technology, and Greg Tasioli in Carpentry. Akash Sethi and Michael Picala both presented last month at CLC's Nanotechnology Film Festival. Mr. Sethi presented on the Nanotechnology of Water Repellent Fabrics, and Mr. Picala presented on the Transmission of Electron Microscope. The students were accompanied by science teacher Tom Chinskey, who presented as well. Vernon Hills Media Students recently competed in a Midwest Video Competition, Vernon Hills Live 2014, created by Yasmin Lau and Carlos Marin, captured third place. Gold awards were received by The Legacy of the Blues by Kenny Dantis, The Haunting of Vernon Hills by Clint Park and Kenny Dantis, and Weapon of Choice Music Video by Kenny Danton. LHS student Allo Garcia Escobar won honorable mention in the 2015 Illinois Best of Poetry and Prose Writing Contest, generated by, sponsored by I A T E, for his poem On Evening. LHS student Luke Watanabe was recognized as one of our four Illinois high school students in the 2015 Leo and Antonia Kershunov Memorial Student Arts and Writing Contest. He received an honorable mention in the poetry category. LHS students Jared Huck, Gabby Munoz, Adam Podra, Osro, and Luke Waterme earned Outstanding Writer Achievement Awards by the N C T E. The LHS Drops of ink publication and website each earned a silver certificate as a whole in the Northern Illinois School Press Association Competition. Individual honors were also earned by Drops of Ink members Hannah Buford, Kyle Alaska, Alex Zolik, Julian Ruff, Sarah Funga, Katie Vrebe, Maddie Salata, and Tom Anchorman. And then lastly, LHS Senior Grant Breckenridge competed in the Junior Olympics Nationals, held May 7th through 9th in Daytona Beach, and is national champion for seventeen-year-olds. Is also tied for first place nationally on vault, is third on floor, fourth on pommel horse, rings and parallel horse, and eighth on horizontal bar. As one of the top twelve seventeen- to eighteen-year-old gymnasts, Grant also qualified for the fourth time for the U.S. National Championships, which will be held in Indianapolis in August. And the following LHS students received honors in their performance for the Skills USA State Competition in Springfield. Graphic Communications, Alicia Stokovich, second place, and then Maro Dragon, third place. Screen Printing, Shelby Wilson was second place, and then Job Skill Demonstration, Amy Flanagan was third place. And that's our good news for student recognition. Board would also like to recognize and appreciate two contributions. A $50,000 donation was made to the Libertyville High School Athletic Department by a LHS parent who prefers to remain anonymous. The donation will be used for athletic field improvements at LHS. And the second donation was made by a former language teacher, department chair, and former board member, Judy Sugarman. She's donated 195 French books to the International Language Department at Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School. Certainly appreciate that addition to our collection. The Board will note that we had and fulfilled two FOIA requests, and we also have for approval the 2015-16 proposed committee and board meeting schedule.
We'll note that the committee meetings are the, as I mentioned earlier, are second, typically the second Monday of the month. 5:30 PM is the Program and Personnel Committee meeting in the LHS library. 6:00 PM is the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting in the LHS library, and then on the fourth Monday evening of the month, 7:00 PM, right here in the Vernon Hills High School Library, the regular board meeting occurs, which you can also view on replay. There are a few exceptions to the rule we move things around for holidays and things such as that. The other thing that I'll note is during the summer, we actually combine those meetings into one fairly long evening, and those meetings take place at the district office, which is right across the street here. So then actually, beginning with next month, the board meeting next month on the 22nd of June, all three of those meetings will take place back-to-back in the district office, so just as a point of reference. But right now, we're just, we need to vote to approve the schedule for the next year.
I make the motion that we approve the 2015-16 committee and board meeting schedule. Second.
Any further comments, discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes.
And then for the Board to approve the 2015-16 Illinois Association School Board Annual News.
Make the motion that we approve the 2015-16 I A S B Annual News. Second.
Any comments, discussion? Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Jackson.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Okay, that passes.
And then I have one other. The Board's aware that over the past several months, we've been discussing the digital learning strategy that ultimately is going to put a Chromebook in every student's hand in the district. We've had extensive conversations in the past month, particularly at our last board meeting, or excuse me, our last P and P meeting on Monday, May 11th. And the summary of those discussions, the Board has a document that outlines that proposal for approval, and you'll see that we're entering our sixth week, I believe it is, of our pilot program, and we talked about how successful and how much we've learned about the distribution, the integration, the student use, as well as the parent concerns about the devices. And that's going quite well, and that's gonna run through the end of the year. The devices for the students, we talked about a shared cost for that, and we took it under advisement, and we're looking at sharing that cost with our parents, where students will pay a $50 fee on a yearly basis, and then at the end of the four years, they will take ownership of that device, and the district will subsidize the rest of that. We also talked about what's going to happen next year with our seniors, our juniors, and our sophomores as they progress, because they won't have paid that $50 a year, and we're going to give them, as they graduate, we're going to give them the option of paying the difference to buy that device. So at the end of next year, seniors, they will have paid $50 toward that device, if they want to pay additional 150, they can own that device, that'll be their option. We've also talked about devices for the teachers currently, about forty percent of our teachers have a current device that we believe will suit them for the next few years. We will, upon approval of this project, survey the staff and give them a choice between a Chromebook, a laptop, and a tablet, and so there's some estimated cost to that. And then what we'll also recall at the professional development that's vital to this initiative to develop our teachers in this technology is to add in our, to add in one FTE in each building. Most typically, we would hire somebody within the district and then replace that person with a, with a relatively new staff member. And if, and you'll see the cost for all of this on the second page there, and so our intent tonight is to bring this to you, to you for a vote in early June, but I'd like to get a consensus from you now if, where you're at with this proposal and your support with that, so.
Roll call, what do you think? Lundstedt?
I'd like to just start by making a comment that I think this is a great program. I think we've heard a lot from, now the folks that have been involved with this, from the administration, the faculty. Matt Torres is back here, he's the District Director of Instructional Technology, I believe I got the title right. He and his team have done a huge amount of work to get us to where we are. We've heard a lot from our student representatives over the past several months regarding this, and that's been very helpful to me. I think we're, you know, we're looking to get some, a formal vote in June in order to make the formal purchases and do our due diligence there, but in order for them to start the planning process and get this moving, we need some consensus to move forward with this, that we intend to move forward with this. I think it sends a message to the team that we're very interested in moving forward with this project, so that being said, I'm in support of it.
Sounds like a yes.
A yes. Feedback's been very positive.
Thank you, everyone.
One thing I'd like, though, is, so this cost that we're looking at here, it's sort of the one-time, all-in cost.
Yes.
What will be the annual cost moving forward then? Are we gonna have, are we gonna continue with the two full-time equivalents? So that's an ongoing annual cost now. We know we have to replace the outgoing senior Chromebooks with ones for the new freshmen. Do we have some kind of cost that we know over the L R P, here's what it's gonna be then?
Yeah, so every year, we will add approximately, depending on the number of students we go, we'll supply the freshman class with a device, and so the cost of that minus the contribution that we'll make over a four-year period, so that would be the difference between the cost of the device, they're $200, and then if we have eight hundred, nine hundred students, incoming freshmen, that would be another device that we would need, yeah.
So with those ins and outs, sort of what's gonna be our annual spend?
You get a rolling budget each year, take all those factors into consideration.
So we can just work that up? I'd love to see that before we make our vote.
We love to use estimates that we have today as to what the cost will be.
Yeah.
And you remember, originally, when we first discussed this, we were talking about a spike that would occur every, every so often, and we flattened that spike out, so that's actually good for everyone.
I think this approach sort of levels that, and so you're doing a portion, just the freshmen and maybe a handful of...
We're counting on the last, because I know, early on, we were talking about maybe like, it's two years ago that we're saying.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the Superintendent's Report. I'd like to invite anyone from the public to comment, but it looks like we don't have any individuals that care to do that, so we will move on with our consent vote agenda.
I would like to, before we ask for approval of the consent agenda, I want to bring to the Board's attention, you'll see on, under the consent agenda on line 3C1A, that we're hiring Brent Mork as a physical welfare and driver ed teacher at LHS. Through omission on our part, we failed to put him on the agenda, further down on the consent agenda, where he will be also hired as the head boys basketball coach at LHS. So, wanted to bring that to your attention so that, again, in June, we will vote on him as head basketball coach, but wanted you to know that each has approval when we vote on the consent agenda.
For just my own education, is that because it needs to be there and on for people to comment to?
Yes.
Is that the reason?
The reason for what?
The reason that has to be one month out?
The reason, the reason it's one month out is because we didn't put it on the agenda and to vote on...
It has to be on.
It has to be on the agenda ahead of time.
It's an omission on our part.
Yeah, yeah, any item that requires a vote has to be published ahead of time, so. So we're just, let's see, we'll look at it.
So I make the motion that we accept the consent vote agenda. Second.
Any other comment?
No, you may, Mary, get a few calls, because I think the paper added that we were voting on the new basketball coach tonight, so. You're good at that.
Luce?
Uh, yes.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is the 2015-16 amended school calendar, which may have to be amended further, but right now, this is the latest version.
This is the latest amended version.
Yeah, until we know more about testing, basically.
Only in the beginning.
So move.
Second.
Any other comments? We have a roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer? Aye.
Okay, the next item is 2015-16 textbook adoptions, and everything is within the budgeted amount, so we're looking for motion to approve those textbook adoptions as presented.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer? Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Okay, and finally, we have one motion for the employment of employees to accept a support staff resignation. So move.
Second.
Okay, comments? We have a roll call, please.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer? Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Okay, so that concludes the report. On to the next.
Thank you. We have the Facilities and Finance Committee, and I guess that's mine to report on as well. We have a couple items here, we have designating the interest earnings for fiscal year 16, and we need a resolution each year to do this.
That's correct. Designating the interest earnings is actually the interest earnings, not part of the principal, which enables us to transfer the funds between the various existing plans that I have.
All right, can we have a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, comments? Okay, can we have a roll call?
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye. Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Okay, and finally, IP intercom wiring and installation contract.
This bid was open after our committee meetings, it was not discussed there, but we would like to ask for, to reject this bid for two reasons. One, we only received one bid on this particular project and the bid that we received was